Good evening, and we will begin the meeting by calling to order and beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consent items for this evening starts with draft meeting minutes for November 25th, 2024. We actually have to push that one due to Commissioner attendance. Draft meeting minutes, January 13th, 2025. Do we have a motion for consent?
I move to accept the draft meeting minutes from January 13th, 2025.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting minutes will be adopted for January 13th, 2025. Moving on to, oh, and do we note that we have some absences?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Commissioner DeRoche absent, Commissioner Llewellyn absent, and Commissioner Ellison is inbound as we speak. For posterity's sake, do we want to take a, do we take her vote at this time or just move on?
We can pause, we got time.
Okay.
Are you approving the draft meeting minutes?
Draft meeting minutes for January 13th, 2025.
I'm an aye.
Aye, all right, very well, the ayes have it. Moving on to draft final findings, sub 24-01, Dahlia Glen subdivision. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve subdivision 20-04 Dahlia Glen subdivision as submitted.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All Commissioners in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And two absent. Therefore, the draft final findings, sub 24-01 Dahlia Glen subdivision And finally, draft final findings for CUP 24-0, Canby Adult Center relocation. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve CUP 24-0 Canby Adult Center relocation as submitted.
And is there a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And two absent. Draft final findings, CUP 24-0 Canby Adult Center relocation is approved. Next up is citizen input on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the vast public to address the Planning Commission on non-agenda items. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Staff and the Planning Commission will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before the meetings, before the meeting ends, or as quickly as possible thereafter. You may speak on non-agenda items via Zoom. Do we have any citizen input on non-agenda items? We do not. Old business. We have a follow-up item, Planning Staff Guidance on Decision Making and Verbal Findings. And to lead us into that discussion is Planning Director Hardy and Ryan Potter.
Yes, good evening, Charles and members of the Planning Commission. This was just a very, very quick reminder as a follow-up to our work session that we had a couple weeks ago, that it's really, really important that when we are voting, or when the Planning Commission is voting, to elaborate on the findings for your decision, especially when you're, the dissenting opinion, or you're voting no on a project, and your no is contrary to the findings in the staff report. It's very, very helpful, especially when we're assembling the written findings, that if, especially the no votes elaborate on which code criteria, then those votes are based on. So I just wanted to put in a plug for that.
Okay, so again, if a no vote is established, you must state why and the specific criteria that is not met?
Exactly, yeah. I mean, it's, I would say it's always helpful for anyone, regardless of their vote, to address the criteria in their comments, but especially when it's a no vote.
And just to add a bit to that, Josh Soper, when he did his training with Bury, Ellsner, Hammond, talked about that as well. I think it's rare to have denial for Planning Commission, 100% denial. We have seen that. I've seen it a few times, and it's, just to reemphasize that point, not just the individual vote, but especially when staff doesn't really have direction on findings. That makes it really awkward and also not defensible. So it's important to bring it back to the, like Brian said, to the criteria as to why the decision, why that decision was made for the individual commissioner.
And, and to clarify, this isn't staff trying to guide the Planning Commission towards any particular vote or voting habit. It's really about the, the ideas and behind the vote, and those really should address the criteria.
That makes sense.
Mr. Chair, I have a question then. So I understand what you're saying, but let's say we get into the deliberation on any given project, and I just want to be clear that you're not asking us to have made up our mind before we get here.
No.
And so if we're deliberating, we're talking about it, and we, we don't feel comfortable with the, let's say, staff's recommendation for approval, should we then ask for continuance so that we can bring this thing back? And then if we're going, if we still don't feel comfortable with it, then we would have time, because it's very difficult to sit up here and, and gather your thoughts on all of the criteria that, that you may or may not disagree with. Because if, I mean, I get what you're asking, but it almost feels like it is, we got to be very careful that we're not coming into the meeting with our mind already made up.
Sure.
Based on the staff report not having listened to the, to the thing. So when we, we hear everything, we go into Commissioner deliberation, and if we, because of the evidence that is brought up, we do not feel that it meets the criteria to sit here and have to spell that out in, you know, in this timeframe that we have here, then possibly we would ask for a continuance to get our, come back and that we would, we'd be able to give you direction? Because you guys, I think what you're saying is, is you're wanting direction. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, there are some opportunities, and Don can correct me if, if he feels otherwise. I think there are some situations where you want to have a continuance, but there's also some situations where the conversation is getting so loaded down with non-criteria opinions, that it's really important, if we can, to steer it back to the criteria. And staff are definitely open to, if there's a, an issue with that project that one or more commissioners don't feel comfortable with, yeah, you might not want to talk it to death for hours and hours, but you might want to ask staff, hey, can you read back that particular piece of the code so that we can dissect it a little bit further to establish that that is why we think we are leaning towards a certain vote? Do you know what I mean? Because sometimes in the conversation, we, we kind of veer away from directly addressing their criteria, and I think that's fine, but it's helpful to kind of steer it back.
I just want, I just want, I don't want the commissioners, the commission to feel like it's necessary for us to possibly have come close to making up our mind before we arrive here. And we don't want to also get into that, that gray area of, well, we certainly don't want to disagree with what staff said because they, they recommended approval. And, you know, I, I love you guys, but sometimes I don't agree with you. I know that that's a shock, but it's just, it is. And I think that what you're asking for, when you say, when you say it isn't, you want the criteria, all, all we have to say is, is we don't feel that it meets criteria five, blah, blah, blah. That's it. We don't, we don't need to go into any depth. I just don't feel, in my opinion, I don't feel that it meets whatever this criteria is. Not just, nope. I vote no.
I think whatever level of rationale that can be provided is, is helpful, and whether that's a little or it's a lot, the more, the better. Because when we get to the written findings, we've, staff have memorialized that line of thinking, which just makes that decision even more ironclad.
Okay.
It just needs to be based very specifically off the criteria, not anything else.
Well, how about if somebody is asking for a variance, and all of the rest of the scoring is just barely over the line, and you're giving them the benefit of the doubt on those points? I would feel comfortable about not granting a variance because it strikes me as that they're just not trying very hard. And I would like to be able to leave it at that, if that's all right. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't confer any specific, you know, issue with any specific criteria, but if it looks to me like they're just not trying very hard to fit into the community, then I'm just going to not grant a variance. And I'm not sure I'd be able to tell you why, other than it's like, come on, really?
And I would, just to follow up with what he is saying, I, I agree totally with what he's saying. Because we have had, we've had some people that have come, and they've asked us for approval on a project, but they're not very good neighbors. And they're not really, their project really isn't in the best interest of Canby. And I could, I could, I could say, well, I don't feel, you know, this criteria, that criteria, you know, and I certainly don't want to sit here and say, you know, I just don't think they're being good neighbors. I just don't think that they're following with the, the feel of what we're trying to get accomplished here. I mean, so you want criteria, we could, I, you know, I guess, I guess what you're kind of trapping us into is, is trying to come up with one of the criteria, and we just say, it just, we just don't feel it meets it.
I, I think a good example is the, the variance criteria. There, there is one of the four criteria that basically does get to sort of compatibility, but we've had several decisions where it almost sounds like the reasoning is like, well, I don't really like it, so I'm going to vote no. And I think you could come to the same conclusion, but say, I don't like it because I don't feel its compatibility, which is the, I interpret as the intent of this particular criteria for the variance. Because it's in there, but we're just not leaning on it enough.
Yeah.
If, if that makes sense.
And I would like to add to Commissioner Hutchinson's, I mean, and not to say what should be said or not said, but in context of that situation, did they in fact explore alternatives? And that is the basis of that situation, that you felt like the variance was not supportable because they could achieve a remedy without a variance, which they sought not to achieve. And again, not to tell you what to say, but that's more defensible than I don't like it. I mean, and again, I know you aren't saying that, but sometimes we're not even sure if, like, it's not even a relevant criteria at all, and that surely could not be a finding, you know, just because it might relate to some person's perspective about, well, you know, maybe like where a business should be located or not located in the city. That is not an approval criteria. That may be your personal opinion, but it's not an approval criteria. So I think, just a bit more, and I think the council kind of does that when they make decisions. I know there's a more policy-driven, and they're not clear in objective on those standards. You all are going to be dealing with a lot of discretion because that's largely what the state has left you all with, is discretionary application. So there will be those parts where we may not see this the same way you do. And that's fine to ask for more information and ask for a continuance of that. If there's consensus amongst the Planning Commissioners, what we're trying to do is avoid the straying way out into left field on something that has completely unrelated to, and not defensible. If it went into an appeal, and let's say, you know, council either remands it back to the Planning Commission, or they say, okay, we're going to deny it, then it goes to Luba. We just want it to be defensible in the end. We're not telling you what to do. That's your prerogative and your job, but it needs to be defensible in the end so that we know what those are. And it, it does make it challenging. Like I said, we've had a couple denials, and those are really difficult when, and they're emotional decisions, you're right. Like, those are normally, it's really difficult to think through logically exactly how you feel about that, and they're usually fairly contested. But just, it helps us to then formulate that finding, the findings. Approval findings are easy. Basically, we agree with what you said in the staff report, and the findings are already made. But denial findings are much more challenging, and hopefully that guides a bit.
I just, I want to make sure, fully understanding, to put it as simply as I can. If we're going to say no, we need to provide an explanation, brief or not brief. It needs to be related specifically to criteria. If we can't relate it to criteria, then we probably shouldn't be saying no. You're not telling us what to say or how to say it. But if we're going to say no, it has to be related to the criteria so that if it does come back, it is defendable, we can protect ourselves.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Makes sense.
So I think we probably have covered this enough, and we're glad, you know, to go into further dialogue. We're not bringing this up to cause consternation. We're bringing it up to make the city defensible on whatever decision that is. And so, and there may be cause in some cases where variance would be denied. And we're not saying that every project should be approved, but it's just, I think, we have a tendency, sometimes I think there's a tendency to go off script a bit on where things are at, and we're trying to bring it back to center. So I think we're finished with that item.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Potter, and thank you for the direction on that, Director Hardy. So I think, moving on to new business, we have none, and there are no hearing items. So we will then move to our work session. The purpose of tonight's work session is to give the Planning Commission the opportunity to discuss the comprehensive plan update as presented by Planning Director Don Hardy. To make the most of the short time we're given for these work sessions, public comment will not be taken. Instead, we invite the public, and we invite, I'm sorry, instead, we invite public comment at all of the Planning Commission's regular meetings under either, either of the two opportunities dedicated on each agenda for public comment. In addition, we invite the public to contact city staff with comments or concerns. Although this is a public meeting, the Planning Commission cannot make any formal decision in a work session. Next step actions are often determined for deliberation and discussion at a properly noticed Planning Commission hearing. And with that, we'll turn it over back to Director Hardy.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is going to be a high-level overview of, I just felt it was important to bring you back into some of the discussions. It's been a while since we've had an update. And just to let you know where things are at, there are still things in motion, and we're working through a few things as well. Hopefully, this gives a high-level, mountaintop, peak kind of overview. This is not really a valley discussion so much as just an overview. Also, leading up to many things that the Planning Commission will end up seeing in terms of the comprehensive plan, transportation system plan, and urban growth boundary expansion. That, all that will be coming forth to you for recommendation for the council. So just starting out, and some of this may be a repeat of what you all are understanding, but just so that we're knowing how this is all fitting together. We have a comprehensive plan, a transportation system plan currently going right now for the current city limits and urban growth boundary. It's based on the economic opportunity analysis, which identifies the amount of acreage for employment lands. We also have a housing needs analysis. It's been approved as well for the housing portion as well, and that's also documented, it's going to be documented in our comprehensive plan update, and also as part of our urban growth boundary expansion. And that's the same as for economic opportunity. But I'm trying to focus on a bit of separating. The comprehensive plan is being run parallel with the urban growth boundary expansion, but the comprehensive plan and transportation system plan will be adopted first, followed by the urban growth boundary initiation process. And in addition to housing and employment lands, we have parklands, which are being looked at in terms of looking at both city urban growth boundary and outside the boundary for what parkland acreage should be, should be added to the city beyond what, what's been added previously. This is kind of a flow chart in general. I don't expect you guys to dive into the detail here, but just to basically say where we're at on the process. The comprehensive plan and transportation system plan are moving in concert with the urban growth boundary process. We have two more community summits, likely going to be fall/winter, you know, fall towards the end of the year, community summit number five and six. We also have two project advisory committee meetings left. Those will likely be late summer and fall. And then we also have a technical advisory committee that's going to meet again on transportation issues. So this, again, was part of what I just covered, but we're looking at current city limits and current urban growth boundary targeted for fall for adoption for the comp plan, and we're looking at residential, commercial, industrial, and parkland policies in that comp plan. The comp plan is important for the purpose of not only identifying policies, but looking at future code updates, which we also plan to do as well. We're planning to start a code update process next fiscal year for the development code. Transportation system plan will address future roads to support plan development and forecasted roads, levels of service. I'm not going to go into too much of that detail tonight on transportation. That's not really the purpose tonight, but just trying to give you an overview of where we're at. So this is the current urban growth boundary for the city, about 3,000 acres. This is going to be high-level here. Again, this is kind of hard to see, but we have housing, household growth expected here that we're looking at, and these are transportation analysis zones. This is where our growth is anticipated within the current boundary of the city. And then we have the same for employment lands. And so this is, this gets into forecasting where growth will happen, and then what the transportation network, how that will function with that. Maybe going back to this slide. This will end up resulting in us having recommended road systems and levels of service. That's forthcoming. We'll have more information on that by June, I believe, with DKS is putting that together, so there'll be more reporting out for you all on that. As part of the comprehensive plan, there was a community vision 2043, so a 20-year vision looking at the community, and the main themes of that was housing for all, supportive and welcoming community, diverse and prosperous economy, resilient public infrastructure, and network of connected green spaces. I won't go through each one of these, but there, these are the, the items, housing for all, and then it's described here. We have supportive and welcoming community, and I'm happy to go into detail here if you'd like, but just was going to do this high-level. Diverse and prosperous economy, resilient public infrastructure, network of connected green spaces. And then another element beyond the, the visioning processes, we've had several community summits, and we asked folks to look at the boundary, the study area that is being looked at. And I'm going to go into a bit more detail on the study area, which is a very, very large area. We're required by state, the state provisions to look at one mile from the urban growth boundary edge. And so that was, this again, shows a lot of colors on the map for different designations, and the community provided input on that. This is one of the factors that we will be looking at as part of designations, in particular for the urban growth boundary expansion area, but just the recognition that all this land is not coming into the city. About a third of the area outside of the boundary, it's, is all we can really take in based on the demands that are associated with the employment lands, housing lands, and parklands. So there's about 1,500 and six, about 1,600 acres total in the study area. Roughly about 555 acres in that range would actually be brought into the city with the boundary expansion. I'll go into that in a bit more detail. So this is the UGB expansion, again, kind of separating from the comp plan and going into that a bit. So we're talking about timeline of this and just kind of the steps, and, and there'll be more conversation around this. I know that some of the Commissioners are very interested in concept planning, and that's something we'll be moving forward with, starting this fall. We're going to be, first step is going to be an urban growth boundary expansion initiation process. That is to set the amount of acreage, and, and that would be the total acreage that we would be going in with for the urban growth boundary expansion. That would then be addressed in terms of designation of land, which could include business, it could include residential, parks. It'll show that in concept planning, and we do have a grant from Oregon Department of Transportation. That grant will be starting this, this summer slash fall, and we're anticipating completion of the concept planning, which will also address infrastructure, roads, utilities, et cetera, in the expansion areas. We're expecting that to be finished by about 2027. We then have to go back and re-adopt the comp plan again with those new urban, with those boundaries and those designations to make them official. And so those would be part of the comp plan and transportation system plan amendment to the comprehensive plan, and that would be anticipated between 2027 and 2029. So what are we planning for? We're looking at about 6,000 residents, about 2,200 homes, 6,700 jobs, 2,700 of those roughly inside the city, and about 4,000 outside of the city in the urban growth boundary expansion area. And that's based on the economic opportunity analysis, go back a slide, and the housing needs analysis. This is, these numbers came from that, those studies, which have been approved, and there were no appeals to those at the state level or by any parties. This is the preliminary land need, as I talked about, and the residential land need is, is pretty well locked in at 73 acres of need for urban growth boundary expansion. Parks land need, maybe more than 43 acres, that's being looked at now. That would just be enough to cover the 6,000 anticipated residents. 10 acres per thousand would give you 60 acres, and then there's some existing land in the city that would be likely used for parks, so there was a reduction there in that. There's also some, looking at the entire city, though, if we're looking at all the land and 10 acres per thousand for existing, these existing city boundary, there could be the argument that we would need more land than 43 acres for parks, and so that's being discussed now. There'll be a work session on May 21st for that discussion about our urban growth boundary and parklands. And then commercial lands and employment lands, mainly, and more on the industrial side, but commercial lands is mixed in with that, about 440 acres of, of employment land is, is the need. And this gets into a bit on the parkland consideration, and that's based on the And this gets into a bit on the parkland consideration, and that's based on, the parkland needs to be based on, you know, the master plan and current comprehensive plan, and that's being discussed, Parks Advisory Board, and will be talked about with the council on that, like I mentioned, on May 21st. And we're looking at the 10 acres per thousand across the city. We're also looking at school lands and whether or not the school would be willing to participate in a share on using some of their land, which would also be an influence on how much parkland need there would be. And so this again gets back to serviceability at a city level on whatever land we expand into would be designated as parkland in the concept planning that we'd be doing, but to make sure that actually materialized, I think we need to have some discussion around the viability of us actually achieving that, or otherwise it would end up being developed without being parkland. This is the study area again in brown, and so a large area that is being studied, and this is diving into this a bit further. This shows the study area where there's, again, about 1,555 acres in the area in blue, and, I'm sorry, 1,555 acres in blue and about 555 acres of need. This is further broken down into, well, how do we prioritize those areas that come into the city and those that may not come into the city? And so this prioritization is, the state prioritization is looking at these four criteria here, and the city of these items, we have to first look at, we have to look at things like CAMB does have exception lands, but CAMB does not have urban reserves or non-resourced lands. So that's number one, is those lands that are exception lands have to come in first, and I'm going to show you where those are in a minute. There are no marginal lands in the city, and there is very little to none low-value farmland. And so the fourth criteria is the high-value farmland, which is pretty much everything that's out beyond the boundary of the city. Then we have to look at the Goal 14 criteria, and there's a report, it's about 80 pages long, and it's being developed and refined, and that gets into efficient accommodation of identified land needs, orderly and economic provision of public facilities and services, comparative environmental energy and economic and social consequences, and compatibility of the proposed urban uses with nearby agriculture and forest activities occurring on farm and forest land outside of the urban growth boundary. So these are the exception lands in yellow, you can see, and these exception lands are lands that are not exclusive farm designation. These were determined some time ago, probably because of their partialization pattern that happened out there. However, even though they are exception lands, some of those lands, especially in the northwest area, are being actively farmed. Part of that discussion, we're quite sensitive to the issue that, you know, the Dahlia farm is not in that area that's in yellow, but the Dahlia farm clearly is a cultural, significant and historically significant property that is a piece that we believe should be removed from consideration of urban growth boundary expansion, and we're also looking at their adjacent lease areas that they have, and some of that is in the exception lands, and making the discussion case with DLCD that those should be removed as well. We're still in the process of doing that. It makes it kind of tricky because you have farming within areas that have been partialized, but it doesn't really mean that the soil's any worse. So it's a bit of a tricky thing, and we're following the state process here. So these yellow areas would have to come in first, is really the bottom line on the sequence here, and then followed by high-value farmland, which is everything else in blue. And there's a lot of blues, you can see. So the next steps, again, kind of going into this a bit further, what we've done so far is economic opportunity analysis, housing needs analysis have been completed, comp plan and transportation system plan, and the UGB process through the Goal 14 process is moving forward. And that Goal 14 process is part of our urban boundary initiation process that would be completed by the end of the year. Comp plan and transportation system plan are also on that same general timeframe. And then we go into concept planning, that would be our next step, and then readopting the comp plan, and then that kind of lets folks at that point, after it's in the comp plan, do the annexation and construction. It's a very, very long timeline to do this, all this process. But we've started, and we're well into that process. So these are some anticipated general dates, July, August, for community summit number five, for the urban growth boundary analysis and transportation system plan update. May, June, next project advisory committee meeting, community, the comprehensive plan will be discussed, and transportation system plan and urban growth boundary recommendations. These are public meetings, and folks are available, if they're available, and we encourage them to participate. It is the project advisory committee that's discussing items, but people are welcome to attend. And then another final community summit, September, October, again, talking about the comprehensive plan, transportation system plan, and urban growth boundary recommendations. So that leads me to the final slide. I did want to point out, we have, Ryan has done a wonderful job of transferring all the documents on the comp plan into this website, so if you're interested in poring through the details, this website shows, provides the information on background that we've done to date, and I think people can stay informed with that. Ryan is here as a resource as well on this, but I put my name and contact information down on that. So with that, if there's questions, I'm glad to go through those with you all.
Don, not to contradict you, we actually haven't migrated all the documents to the city version yet, but they're still all available on the cultivating CAMB website that's been live for a couple of years now. But we will be migrating them so that the city version can exist in perpetuity.
So was this helpful? Did this make sense? I'm hoping I didn't put you all to sleep.
Nice reminder of just where we're at, because we haven't looked at it for quite some time.
It's good. I've got a question about the prioritization of lands. So, I mean, I understand there's a prioritization. We've got all this high-value farmland that will be the priority in making the designation of the new UGB, and some of that is in areas that we've clearly had to delineate for manufacturing, just based on other forces that say we need more industrial and commercial land. So what's the point of forcing you to prioritize high-value farmland if you're going to use it for other things?
If I'm understanding the question, you know, there is the, their layers are not just the criteria for which property should come in first or which land should come in first. The Goal 14 process actually looks at things like, will development adjacent to this have a more material impact than something else if we're weighing out property in one part of town versus another? The industrial area seems more logical as a logical extension of that, but that still has to be evaluated on what impacts are going to be happening in those areas for adjacent, on adjacent farming. That's really how the state addresses that issue. You know, it's not a perfect system exactly, but, I mean, part of this is, the idea behind this is, when we do the boundary, and ultimately the council will have to make a decision on where the boundary is, that really will come down to some of those decisions about what makes most sense based on the state criteria for putting that into the boundary, and then that could theoretically be challenged, and sometimes conservancy groups do that.
Yeah, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me to prioritize farmland when we know the use is going to be not farmland. And I guess it's more of a statement than a question. I just, I don't fully understand the logic behind it.
Right. One more thing, and then I speak. There's a dichotomy, Oregon has a dichotomy clearly on this whole issue about when you're surrounded, when your city is completely surrounded by farmland, you have no choice but to go into farmland. So how do you minimize your impact that you would be doing to farmland and still fulfill those needs for a 20-year horizon? But it's a system that doesn't necessarily have a perfect solution to it.
I was going to say, because I think I understand, I understand what you're saying. It's not really that it's a, it's a, one of the singled-out four priorities, it's really meant to be last priority, so that it's like, it's separated into where you should go first and then last. And the system, I think, was, it's sort of set up for a hypothetical city where you have a mix of urban reserves and rural reserves and exception lands and low-value farmland, which we don't really have, and high-value farmland. And if that were truly the situation, you wouldn't even touch the high-value farmland because it's last. It's just, we happen to be in a situation where we're just surrounded by a ton of high-value farmland. And we've heard from landowners that within that high-value farmland, the people on the ground, they know that even within that category, there's things that are better suited for farming than others. But going based on the state system, it kind of collects it all in that one category.
And Ryan, I think, great, great comment. You know, and part of the unfortunate thing is, we don't really have like that right line that, I think we are probably unique in some ways in this community compared to other comparative jurisdictions that may be more in the metro area that have those distinct lines. And they've made those distinct lines, and we jump from exception land to high-value farmland because the other, other types of property just are not there.
Yeah, and that's what I'm realizing with this conversation.
And so brilliant point, Ryan, and so I think that's what makes it difficult. It's not to say, well, that's all we have. Well, it is kind of all we have, though, because, but the exception lands are not small, and they look small on the map, but those acreages are not small, it's several hundred acres, just in the exception lands.
Okay. And then how do, so there's 1,500-ish acres in the study area, and it's going to be about 550 acres that are ultimately going to be incorporated. What's the decision process for deciding which areas are going to be selected?
So the, I would like to see, you know, as we move into the community summits, and the project advisory committee would probably be the next rung on the recommendation, then moving into the summits, and then moving into the planning commission, and moving into the council. That's really how this is all going to be formulated, and I don't have an exact schedule for what this all looks like. And do we jump right into hearings, or do we do work sessions? That hasn't been quite figured out yet, but that's the sequence. Project advisory committee first, rung, community summits, planning commission, city council, work session slash hearings through that process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Have a question. We were talking about institutional zones, there's some zones that we could add to the map that would include school districts and maybe something different for the country club or something like that. Is that part of the code redux coming up?
So, well, there's two things that we're looking at. One is in the comp plan and the designations for the comp plan, which, we're sorting that out a bit on the designations for those publicly owned spaces and identifying those as public, even though the underlying zone may be different. Secondly, you're right on the, my vision would be on the code update, that we have some definition around public facility designations. Is that everything that's been approved through a land use master plan, through the planning commission, and maybe scaling that on the size of the project, then that may tell you whether or not what process, the land use process, would be subsequent to that. Maybe most of things would just go to an administrative review after they were acknowledged through a master plan process. That's still on the horizon. We're hoping to get to some of that detail in the code update process to address that, because I think that is a missing rung. I mean, our system is not, it still has definition, but it would just be a lot easier for folks to just be encouraged to do a master plan for whatever facility they have, and then not have to go through all kinds of permit review process. The school's gone through, I can't tell you how many conditional use permits. That's a ton, like, it's something like, you know, maybe probably 15 plus, I'm guessing, or more over the last 20 years, and so it's a lot. And so that would really remove that process, do a master plan, and then maybe everything becomes administrative if you do a master plan, and we don't have to go through these processes than each time we do a project.
Vice Chair Ewer, any final thoughts? Okay.
May I? I didn't want to, like, take on. I was curious when you were bringing up parklands, that potentially there could be some collaboration with school lands to incorporate as parklands. How could that come about, and would it cement any lands that are agreed on to use as parklands as parklands forever? So that we're...
Those are all to be worked out as part of those discussions, and it gets a bit tricky on what that operational, those are the very beginning of a conversation, you know, on that part. We are required, on the one level, to go through that exercise, the state wants us to say, well, are there lands, they look at a map and say, there's tons of lands everywhere. Well, they're school lands, and they belong to the school. Then the question becomes, if the school's amenable, and they may be in certain circumstances, how many hours a day? What does that look like? So it wouldn't be like, hey, there's a new park here. I'm guessing it would be some sort of arrangement, and probably formulated into some sort of IGA, intergovernmental agreement, that would address that. That would then have some material influence on parkland need, but I would not say that that would resolve that issue of the need beyond, you know, to look at 10 acres per thousand across the entire current urban growth boundary would mean we'd have to have additional land that would be additive beyond what we're doing for just the population growth of the 6,000, so that was anticipated.
Okay. In the meeting on May 21st to talk about parklands and the UGB, whose meeting is that?
That's the city council.
That's the city council.
Yeah, and that's something, it's really kind of at their level on this issue. I want you all to be informed, it's not that, like, this is not something the planning commission doesn't need to be involved with, but it's more of that, kind of like, where are we at on this? We're also doing system development charge updates as well, discussions with them, we've had another work session on that. These are fairly complex, we're getting to the, like, formulaic part of this, what does this look like even formulaically? Hillsborough and Wilsonville do it differently than other jurisdictions. I think one revelation is that we are pretty low on our SDC collection across the metro area, so there's clearly some room for adjustments. Do we do one district, or do we do special districts for collections for system development charges? Are there some carve-outs for affordable housing? Are there scalable SDCs that we look at for the size of a home pays, you know, a small ADU, accessory dwelling unit, does that pay lesser than a medium-sized home or a large-sized home? Those are discussions that we're continuing to have with council.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other...
No, that was it. No, just thank you, and just mainly, it's just an update for, I mean, I think it's been a while, and I'm hoping this is helpful. I know it's a lot, it didn't go into a lot of depth on detail, but it's something that we want to keep you informed as this continues.
Very good. Items of interest guidance from planning commission. I think we've pretty well, excuse me, I think we've pretty well covered clarification of voting. I think that was our biggest item. And then also, you did say fence code at the next meeting?
Next meeting, Ryan will be doing the work session on that, and so we're going back into fence code. Trying to move that forward, it's complicated. As you guys, we're trying to make it less complicated, like, you know, I know we've...
Just a preview, I think where we left off, if I remember correctly, was, you know, give us some examples of each, each part of the code, and then we could have a starting point. Is that kind of, are you still on the same track?
Yeah, the idea was to bring you actual language that you could look at.
Okay, awesome.
Code language, yeah.
Unless commissioners have anything else? No?
Just that I'm so dang excited.
Vice Chair Ewer.
So I have a question. Our last meeting, we had an issue before us, and I'm not exactly sure how to phrase this, but we had a situation where we had an opportunity to include sidewalks into the project and to get that piece of business taken care of. And I was going down that track, but then we had input from a liaison that said that it was no problem. The crosswalks could be put in, the sidewalk could be put in... The crosswalks could be put in, the sidewalk could be put in, basically said it was on the city's nickel. And I, I was a little, I didn't feel good about that because I felt like it was, we needed to have the opportunity to get those sidewalks taken care of. That, that piece of, that side of town is going to become developed at some, more than it is now, at some point. And our whole system of sidewalks and crosswalks and so on and so forth are kind of important. And we, we end up with this quilt work, patchwork all over town of, you know, we got 200-foot of no sidewalks and 100-foot of sidewalks. We got sidewalks on one side of the street and not on the other side of the street. And I, 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 I wasn't quite sure how to take the, I don't know if it was an offering or whatnot of, I guess my question is, is when, when something like that occurs, should we go ahead and just mandate it and as part of a, as part of the approval to, that we, we want sidewalks in there? Because if, if, right now, I'm not really sure what's going to happen with that. I'm not really sure that the, the intersection is going to get crosswalks in it. I'm not really sure that we're going to ever get sidewalks there, and that ship has now sailed. And so in another four years, when the use of that property changes again, then we'll have another opportunity to actually get sidewalks in there. So I'm, I'm kind of curious as to how, I, I kind of felt like we got waylaid a little bit by a promise of something that I'm not really sure that promise was an accurate thing. So, moving forward, I guess my question is, is how should we handle stuff like that?
I, let me give some observations. I think the first thing was that project was quite unique in the sense that it did not meet, did not meet proportionality requirements for improvements. Proportionality meaning, there was no building expansion for that, that building. And traffic-wise, proportionality, it really was not triggering sidewalks by itself. But the planning commission, it's carved out in our code, says that is an authority that the planning commission has as well. So there's a balance there. More globally, I think that we need to do as planning, is to talk to Public Works more specifically, and DKS, as they're doing the transportation system plan update, and give you an answer on what is the sidewalk program for the city. Or geographically, when we're dealing with these issues, give you the contextual information in advance for that. And it's a bit of a mixture of things where the city does have plans, but I don't know if those are well articulated. I'd like them to be more well articulated, so it's very clear as to what that is. It's also really difficult when we don't have a public works staff here, and I'm trying to answer questions for the public works director, which I cannot answer, not that, you know, if I had the answer, I'd be glad to, but these are things they are controlling. But I think that we, we as staff need to do a bit better job of explaining the broader context. We're not doing this, like, complete circle around the thing. And then, like, I, I think there was definitely some truth around, like, you're doing one side of the sidewalk or crosswalk and you have to do the other side. I do believe that is correct from an ADA perspective. But I think that part of this is the context of this in relationship to our role as city was not well explained. And we got way into this thing, other than saying it wasn't proportionality required, that we probably could have done a bit better job on our end in retrospect of this. I didn't know where that conversation was going to go. And it went pretty deep on that discussion. And some of these are more regional items that the city has a role in. And then the question becomes, what are configurations of roads going to look like in the future? Holly and territorial may not immediately be a traffic signal, may be a four-way stop before it becomes a traffic signal, but what is the plan for that? And so I think the transportation system plan that we're updating, we made our consultants aware of this, we need to be able to explain this. So like, what are those improvements? So people are like, it needs to be improved. Well, what is it, where is it on the CIP and how is that going to be addressed? But I think that needs to be a bit more in our staff reports, and we need a bit more information from public works, and we need to be requesting that information as we get into these projects, especially when we have road systems like the ones you're dealing with.
Right. Okay. Yeah, especially when we had an applicant that was, and this is kind of where I got a little confused. We had the applicant that was, she, she made the statement several times that she had told her board that she, that she would be very surprised if they didn't have to put sidewalks in as part of this approval. She said that, like, three times. Then we had another input in that, well, the city's going to take care of it. And so then I became, then it, then it was a question, well, why should we put the burden on the applicant to do it if the city has every intentions of doing it? But then, again, I'm not really sure that's true because there's been several places of improvement that we've done on the streets that the owners of the property had to pick up the price of...
The sidewalk.
Of the sidewalks on their frontage. And I didn't see this as any different. So I, I, that, that was, that became very confusing, and I hope we didn't miss an opportunity there. Not that I wanted to put an extra burden on them, but this is the only way we can get business taken care of.
And I understand, and I, I think part of it is even more complicated in the sense that these roads may not have their full design configuration figured out either. I mean, some of these never really were completely built out. I mean, and so what, what is that plan? And I was kind of feeling the same way, like, I'm not sure where to land on this, other than legally, we could, we're, we're at a pretty difficult position that, you know, I think proportionality-wise, if we required sidewalks all around that property, it would be beyond what we should be requiring, based on the, you know, several Supreme Court cases on this. So that, that by itself was like, we were a bit leery, but we also, Brianna, very much skated that line, saying, well, the planning commission still has its purview. And I felt like you all tried to do the right thing by doing the due diligence and still ended up with a piece of that that made sense in the end.
Well, I think the problem too that we had was, I think the applicant went away with, like, whoo, they're paying for the sidewalk.
But I...
They're, they're, they're off the hook.
I remember there being a major connectivity problem, like, because, I mean, on, on Holly, there is no, for at least a half a block, there's no sidewalk on either side. And so if you're running a mobility scooter, you're driving it out into the street, you know, where we were really concerned about steering traffic towards dead ends and that creating an unsafe condition. And so connecting the one little piece of sidewalk we had to their active parking lot, which gives them a sidewalk with ramp connection all the way to downtown, was really the only thing that made sense, especially considering that the far side of all of the cross, or the near side of all the crosswalks, as well as the far sides, failed to meet current crosswalks.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry to interject, but we are talking about a project that's not out of its appeal period yet, and so it's probably not the wisest to be relitigating it before it's out of its appeal period.
We've already approved findings, so we're, I don't think that we're...
There's still an appeal period.
I think, well, I think what I'm saying is not so much that specific project.
Sure.
I'm just saying, moving forward, when we have other situations, we have input from another party that's saying, you know, we're going to pick up the tab type thing. It just makes it, sorry. It makes it a little difficult to, to make that decision because now, now we, we're, in that particular instance, we're, I don't know what the sidewalk situation is going to be. But moving forward, when this happens again, I think that it's, it is, from a due diligence standpoint, as far as the commission is concerned, we need to make sure that we have sidewalks and we get them in when we can get them in, is, is, is my point. Because if we don't take that advantage of that, like I say, it's going to be another 40 years possibly before we get the opportunity to do that because we can't, unless the city just goes in and, and blanket does everything.
But I think the type of project and the thing that we're reviewing has some impact on it too, right? If it was a new development, obviously, they're going to take care of sidewalks and that's going to be calculated ahead of time. These are just people who are moving from an existing building to an existing building. So saddling them with all of the improvement to move buildings seems kind of incredibly excessive to me. But maybe we need to change our rules where we could calculate some amount of money or some amount of improvement that needs to be bought into to help support the growth of the sidewalk when the time comes. Because it feels like, it feels like it's fair for them to contribute some, but it doesn't feel like it's fair to ask them to do it all, especially for moving a building.
Yes, yes and no. I mean, the, the thing of it is, is you can't, you can't say, well, this person, you know, because they're, you know, this is their situation, they don't have to pay it. But this person over here, you know, and they, when they come, you know, then they should, they should pick it up. It is, it is our job to make sure that when we have the opportunity to take care of a piece of business that hasn't, historically hasn't happened on that particular type of property, that we get, we take care of business.
I just see relocation as very different than building something new.
And, and there, there is Supreme Court legal precedent. We learned this in, in planning school. There's a two-step process for the legality of exactions. There's the nexus test and the proportionality test. And the proportionality test, it's from the 80s or 90s and ironically is an Oregon case that made it all the way to the Supreme Court. It was Dolan versus City of Tigard. And exactions have to be roughly proportionate. And that's kind of what Commissioner Driscoll is saying. The nexus is, is it, is exaction related to the impact of the project? And then that second test, is it proportional to the project? And so obviously, there's still gray area there, but it, the proportionality is definitely something that should be considered.
And just to add to what Ryan's saying, in that case, the one in Tigard, was a plumbing shop, and the issue was a trail sidewalk that was asked. And people that go to plumbing shops are not necessarily walking on a trail. It's, this is kind of the, I'm really boiling this down, but essentially, that was not proportionate. So there, to Ryan's point, again, that doesn't mean we waive everything. I think back to this issue about the programming and what the city's role is, what is the applicant's role. I think we need to be a bit more educational on the front end, so you all are a bit more informed on that, so we're not all over the map as this discussion happens. And it was a bit of a discussion.
One thing that, that might help, and I'm not sure how, how far you, down this road you go, is just, like, what does it cost for 10 feet of sidewalk? What does it cost for 10 feet of half-street improvements, you know?
Yeah.
What kind of, because it's like, you know, just as, I'm not sure I'm tapped into the market enough to understand, you know, roughly proportional when I, because I really don't understand what these costs would be.
It would, bringing it back to what you're saying, it would just be great to know if you're able to, like what you're saying, explain a little bit more of what is covered and what's not. Because what I, what I was struggling with from the whole thing is they're coming here for a, you know, conditional use permit, and we're now...
Well, they had a hypothetical day because we're not relitigating.
Hypothetical. We got well into...
Just to be clear.
Yeah, thank you. We got well into the weeds on sidewalks, which, to Commissioner Ewer's point, is important if this is the opportunity to do that. But these folks are sitting here like, okay, well, you don't know really what you're talking about, and we're here for this. So, and I, we're, like, we're taking up a bunch of their time and they just want their answer. And I understand that this is a really important part to it, but if we don't know, it doesn't do any good to, to discuss it. You know what I mean? And I was extremely confused between the new information that was brought up by our liaison versus what the applicant was presenting versus what we were clarifying from planning staff. And it was hard to track with that because it felt like everyone was saying... And all of it was kicked off, and we had no idea we should have considered this at all. Because there was no mention of it in the documentation to kind of like, at least lead us to think that we were going to need to consider that as a possibility.
So two things I want to ask about is, is that in planning staff's queue to add a review criteria before it comes to us that clarifies the particulars when it comes to sidewalks, crosswalks, and any future project that comes up?
And most of the time, this is going to be a non-issue to some of the discussion here.
Correct.
It's an automatic, in a situation where we're saying, no, there's, it's disproportionate, yes, that is in our queue.
Okay.
Because I think that, this is like, less than 1% of your projects are not going to have that requirement.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think like Dawn said, if, an important piece that we staff need to start bringing, and this is a good eye-opener, is, you know, we're going to have a new TSP soon, is, does the TSP have a identified project that's two blocks down from whatever is being proposed? And so we will definitely include that information in what we bring to you guys so that that context is better, you know, because maybe there's a big intersection down the street and there isn't a project identified in the TSP, and then that obviously is meaningful to you.
And when it comes to proportionality, it's interesting too, because depending on the municipality, I think there might be different views of proportionality in some cases. Like, we had a dental office that had a failed sewer in northeast Portland, and it was an existing building, but it was a private sewer in the public right of way. It's like City of Portland's nemesis. I hate it now. And it went, it ran right along, you know, the sidewalk down Broadway. And as a part of that project, that sewer getting replaced, they not only wanted the ADA upgrades on both sides of the sidewalk to happen, but also across Broadway. So those two ADAs as part of their permitting and fixing their sewer, I just, it was, it was crazy. And I mean, those sidewalks are like 40 grand sidewalks apiece. So I'm always, when you mentioned the proportionality, I just, I'm always curious, does, is it municipality by municipality, or is there a standard across the board for measuring proportionality?
I mean, there, there is, I mean, there's general standards, and I think that's why we have our legal counsel as well to lean on, on, on some of these. I mean, I think part of it is, if we, I mean, the one threshold is, if we're not, if it's not generating traffic that would be substantial, it's going to be a hard argument to require hundreds of thousands of dollars on sidewalks for somebody that's not generating any more traffic or any more trips than they were before. I mean, that's, that's kind of a general statement. And new development is a lot easier because those trips are not there. So anything is, is essentially a change and like, and it's also something that is just kind of common and associated with those, those features, and it's a bit easier to justify. You know, conversion of buildings is really tricky. It just is. I mean, when you, and we probably need, and this is another code element, which we probably need to have a bit better handle on, is, is change of use, which is not something well-articulated in our current code either.
Why can't we just change commercial to residential? The council keeps asking that about downtown Portland.
Yeah.
It's like, eh.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned that there's the, what was the acronym you used? CIP? Or no?
Yeah, capital improvement plan.
Got it. Is that something that we have access to, to see, or would that be a public works director conversation where we can ask kind of the global questions too about...
Available publicly. We're happy to send that out in the link to you all. And, you know, again, with our whole program going, our comp plan being updated, I mean, that's also being, you know, looked at as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And that, the system development piece that we're working on is kind of a tandem that's also part of that.
Gotcha. That's the, that's the fee review?
The fee review. And that, you know, system development charges do pay for, you know, they pay for proportion. Again, back to the impact, you're paying your proportion share, and a lot of times you're going to see that where like, they're paying, you're paying SDCs and that pays into a plant, like Ryan was talking about, a plant improvement for, and then that, that's your mitigation, essentially.
Gotcha. Okay. Commissioners, any other comments, concerns? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
A move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.